We ready? We're waiting for Michelle, or we ready?
No, she's gonna come in in a minute.
I got the green light here, do I gotta press anything on that thing?
Uh, it's the green light's on, yep, exactly.
Okay. Sure, checking each one from one to three. Check, one, two, three.
Can you repeat that one more time?
Check, one, two, three. Let me hold, this looks like it's a new copy, but you just hold it down. Hold it. I like the old timing, the old style, which you could see. That was very simple. Oh my, big one. I like that timing, I like that timing, that one worked out.
Hello, hello, hello.
This thing, this thing, this equipment should take no more than five minutes. Yeah, don't say.
Yeah, I know, I'm gonna say very stuff like.
We try to.
Well, it's not gonna work.
Eventually, in the summer.
Yeah, next fall.
Next year.
What if it hits a hundred and fifteen in here, or what?
You don't know that the word would be broken up.
You think, uh?
There is a little picnic table.
There is.
Come on, maybe I can stop. Oh yeah, there's food, what's there? And we're, I'm better if we didn't know it. I'm better than the team, I just wanted to make sure that they understood that. Big price, why they come? Back somewhere, he had, he had, he'd ask, he'd ask, he'd ask. Well, he actually speaking every fifth evening. Twenty-four hours. Speaking every fifth, I thought there was something wrong. He comes across here, he just knows this means your battery's fully charged, so shut it off. Yeah. The, he said, he, he said he like, he put a new, uh, new product. Um, I'm supposed to say like seven bottles, but now I got, have it shooting you.
Nobody on, no, so this isn't, uh, that's not lighting up.
And what are you connected to, with the, uh, with the apparel?
Please, I just am, I think.
By the USB.
Let's go.
Who that was? I know, it's sure not good, it's been a hot month, yeah. That's what we need on.
Oh, like, hang on, I realized, I think we're good.
Oh, you might be picking up here, so why don't you talk over there, let me see if it's picking up.
You want me to say something over here, or should I press the microphone?
Oh, no, that's, that's good.
That's good, we're good?
No, that's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
All right.
What's that?
Yeah. I'll call the meeting of the Finance Committee to order, um, first we'll call the rules.
Councilwoman name?
Yeah.
Council Morin, Council Rubio.
Yes.
No, go off. I called the row, we're getting instructed, yeah, yeah. Uh, there is no public input, I'd say, but we take care of it. Um, Council Rubio, number two.
Item number two, Revolution authorized on the abatement of tax for motor vehicles just in the state, which is January, February, and March twenty twenty five in the amount of fifty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars, took one cent.
Motion been made by Council Rubio, seconded by Council Morin, take up the resolution, authorize the abatement of taxes on motor vehicles, real estate, and changes. January, February, and March twenty twenty five in the amount of fifty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars, ten, one cent, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Bob, go ahead.
Okay, so, on this thing, I'm just going, um, in twenty forty four, we had a evaluation, and, uh, the past six months of the old state tax events, including this, this four, total hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, double power out, so, um. Couple items I'd like to give you a test to do on this, um, on the real estate side, um, the property, uh, of the C G R I, the topic, um, that's eleven eighty-one Central Avenue, it's a master's and, uh, open, from, uh, the building, got it over to the state.
Yeah.
So, we've cleared that, we've kind of agreed with that, and we've reduced the value to forty-four point three fifty, so we need to adjust that. Um, otherwise, there was, uh, part of the sale, uh, sale, which is part of the apartment for the old state design, and we probably feel, um, uh, same for the position of the unit, some units do not, up to par, and I realize that exists, but, um. So, if I was to drive, you took that value, you took the profit, and, of course, we, yeah, we were kind of high on it, based on, top of all, a lot of those, so, it's all over, so, yeah. It'll basically treat the other, to be discussed, property, um, so we did an adjustment on that. Um, on the tangibles, um, there was a count of the life stand, intention scheme, um, that, two minutes, we'd make sure that we still, we was keeping the bill, we'd also build on the life stand, and we just have a few adjustments to set, uh, first thing, we created an app, then we did a second adjustment on that.
So, you left work?
Question, yeah, that's for, uh, life stand position points. For L G L N, I know.
Any attached stories?
Yes. We'll, I'll be very impressed to take that.
When you have any questions? Yeah, on the team, I'm looking to, uh, for what? Second. It's been made by Council Rubio, and, and seconded by Council Morin, and we, uh, support the resolution, we consent for the full council's support, we've eight, you know, fifty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars, and one cent, uh, the local vote. Steven Wilbername? Yes. Council Morin?
Yes.
Council Rubio?
Yes.
Three to zero. Number three. Okay.
An ordinance repealing and replacing scheduled pay rates for local ten twelve, in eighty-eight twelve, the court of warrants to the city of the Tucket, nineteen ninety-six, correction, schedule was three rate.
My wife's worried, it's sort of my marriage. Motion been made by Council Morin, seconded by Council Rubio, that we take an order to recuse, replacing these typical pay rates, the local ten twelve, in the eighty-eight dash twelve, the court of warrants to the city of the Tucket, nineteen ninety, the correction for the case type of pay rates. Um, all those in favor of taking it up?
Aye, aye.
Director, uh, I understand this is just something that came out of a negotiation, and that was, all of this, uh, language, you know, basically.
Exactly, yeah, correct, you know, sixty, I would think of that, it was misphrased, it's been included behind six, not as fix in it.
Yeah.
And getting more of mixed, you know, for that, but, and the ones that's, um, we're gonna do a memory, memory and a little understanding of that, and then it's not possible.
But there is no back pay on, on any of this, this is, this is just simply, uh, classified, uh?
Exactly.
Okay. So, what are the one, the one that? Yeah, those are the one that we left off, oh, they were left off. It was actually on, it was on time, took it one back to twenty-three, for some reason, it wasn't, when I agreed that I'm going for the same demand, just about, but, we can't turn it over to the contract, right after that, for some reason.
So, we realized, uh, we wasn't there, so, decided to put some.
Absolutely. Any other questions? On the team, motions were approved.
Second.
It's been a motion by Council Morin, seconded by Council Rubio, that we approved an order to recuse, replacing the pay rates for local ten twelve, and dash eighty-eight for, uh, court of warrants to the city of Tucket, nineteen ninety-six, the correction for pay rates, uh, both for total, or for total. Chairman Wilbername?
Yes.
Council Morin?
Yes.
Council Rubio?
Yes.
Three to zero. Uh. Council Rubio, second to four?
Item number four, an ordinance that's being replaced instead of, in the, for local ten twelve, eight dash twelve, the court order to the city of the Tucket, nineteen ninety-six, reclassification of, of, account two, I moved to post only definitely.
It's been moved by Council Rubio, seconded by Council Morin, that the post owns, uh, the reclassification for company two indefinitely, uh, for the, for. Chairman Wilbername? Yes. Morin? Yes. Council Rubio?
Yes.
Three to zero. Okay, Council Rubio, the number five.
Norman, just saying, it's like a prevalent theory for local one, zero, uh, ten twelve, I, and eighty-eight dash twelve.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Eighty-eight dash twelve, yeah. Section eighty-eight dash twelve.
Section, okay. Of the court of orders to the city of the Tucket, nineteen ninety-six, reclassification from number two, substitute A, I need to say, uh, two, post only definitely.
No, no.
No, last one. I'm sorry, I need to say this out.
I'll say it. Yeah, it moved by Council Rubio, and seconded by Council Morin, uh, we take up the notice repealing, replacing the scheduled pay rates for local ten twelve, in eighty-eight dash twelve, the court of warrants to the city of the Tucket, nineteen ninety-six, reclassification of account two, substitute pay. Uh, okay. Director, I'm all over the table.
Aye.
Director?
Okay, so, we could possibly to increase, uh, due to, um, significant of the challenges, we can increase, um, this decision from a two-ten to a two fifteen. Um, however, conducting the analysis, I saw that, uh, a grade change was appropriate, but to a grade twelve, uh, and I did that through an internal equity comparison, to look at other positions with similar skills, with similar levels of responsibility, um, so it's really to go to itself. Um, some of the significant changes were, uh, increased support among tax assessor area, including additional software programs that have to be learned, to realize, I'm a better.
Is this the accountant?
Uh, no, this is the senior, I thought.
No, we were, we were on account number two, the substitute A.
Oh, I followed that, I thought, um.
No, we didn't, we didn't do the mistake there.
Okay, you didn't tell the accountant, okay.
Yeah, like, I thought that was like. There, there was a mistake, there was a mistake in the accountant, too, that's why they put a substitute in there, but, the, the, the difference between the original and the, and the substitute is it adds those things that we just approved, if you just approved, it puts those into this. So, it wasn't in the first one, it wasn't in the original one, three account, too, so we're putting those pay rates into the second, so it's approved.
So, you don't need to discuss sound, do you?
Yeah.
No, no worries. Uh, so this one is, um, uh, the first change to term of the favorite R four point six, and R four seven, the original request was the R fifty-one. Um, similarly, as I said, to go as addition, um, I looked at the God three, um, for, with the responsibility increases, and I found it to be equivalent to, uh, permanently that we have still status as R four seven, so I did see it could warrant an increase, but at that level, it was what they were requesting, so.
The way from R forty-three to R forty-seven, which is not much of this.
Probably. Um, just from, um, a page in, and a fifty-nine thousand, sixty-four thousand R three, so sixty-four thousand, sixty-nine.
And the previous request was going far?
Yeah, those are fifty-one, we put it from seventy-nine thousand to seventy, um, seventy-nine thousand.
And I guess I want to make it clear, this is not an arbitration award, and this is what's been negotiated between your office and, and the accounting office, so.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, typically to practice, I'll, I'll often get the question, which is fairly high, but I always, uh, make sure I compare it to internal equity, so it's the proper level.
Okay.
And those are the ones that are there.
Okay.
Some of this.
Yeah, and, and, and again, while we're a legislative body, I understand we have certain responsibilities when it comes for pay rates and stuff, that they're, they're put through us, uh, I just wanted to make a statement that, uh, we value long-term employees, just like we value anybody, we've heard over the years about attention, uh, retention in, um. And attraction, for getting people, we think it's just as important for the people that actually have put in years of service and have qualified skills here, so, we're, we're happy that they're actually being looked at, we also recognize our, our role, too, when it comes to an arbitration, it's just basically a rubber stamp, fill it up, if an arbitrator decides something, I'm not gonna overturn an arbitration, but, it's nice to see that, if the given resource department is negotiating with, whether it's the unions, or whoever, it's a staff member, that they're being paid accordingly, that's all that matters, so.
That's our focus, to make sure the job itself is the proper place, rather than, uh, we don't focus on people, and we just try not to, focus on the job itself.
And I, and I read the, the, the description there of what the added duties were and stuff, that, not only for that one, but also for the, the senior appraisal technician, too, so, again, I'm, I'm happy that the people are putting in for these things, and that they're actually being with that, and people are being reasonable about what they get, and this, I also, um, think through my reading, this one, for the accountant, goes to back pay to January, correct? I think it's.
Yeah, this one is to January.
Is January, I believe, the other one, if it's approved, goes back to like I told her, or something, and we're done with it.
Yeah, sort of, and the reason we did this one for January, it's because of, plus, it's our.
One of my, one of my faults, I guess, from being retired, is I have plenty of time to read stuff, not that I really enjoy it, but I got plenty of time to read stuff, so, with that being said, uh, I'll entertain a motion, unless the council, the, has, the committee has any more questions. I entertain the motion.
I mean, if we have a question?
No.
Please stop, I'll make a motion to be approved.
Always indeed. Sometimes I get a lot of them, yeah, so, I can. In order to the failure, I think you asked. Motion's been made by Council Rubio, seconded by, seconded by Council Morin, replacing the pay rates for local ten twelve, eighty-eight dash twelve, the court of warrants to the city of the Tucket, nineteen ninety-six, reclassification of account two, substitute pay, uh, all those in favor of, well called, well. I'm standing. Steven Wilbername? Yes. Council Morin?
Yeah, Council Rubio?
Yes.
We do that.
Okay, uh, Council Morin, number six.
Number six is an ordinance, eighteen, replacing the schedule of pay rate for local thirty-nine sixty and eighty-eight twelve, at the code of warrants to the city of the Tucket, nineteen ninety-six, reclassification, senior appraisal technician, tangible property specialist. Except for the section.
Motion's been made by Council Morin, seconded by Council Rubio, that, and, plus, repealing and replacing the scheduled pay rates for local thirty-nine sixty and eighty-eight dash twelve, the court of warrants to the city of the Tucket, nineteen ninety-six, senior appraisal technician, to intangible property specialist, um. All those in favor of taking up the motion?
Aye.
All of us, too. Okay, director?
Go ahead. Um, so, this is a request to change the grade favorite on two-ten to two-twelve, with two, about fifty-seven to sixty-six, and a page in at two-ten, uh, sixty-two thousand, seventy thousand, two-twelve. The original request was to fifteen, however, uh, similar to the last one, um, are viewed in terms of the, the responsibility, as the word said, with the criminal equity, to public, so there was a warrant to, uh, to increase this, so, uh.
Okay.
Um, and, as I mentioned earlier, primarily, to see who increased responsibilities related to supporting the practice also.
Yeah.
Including new, uh, programs, um, new programs to pay for that.
Any other members having questions?
Yeah.
Once again, I'll, I'll, once again, I'll just reiterate, I said that very slow. Once again, I'll just reiterate, reiterate that, uh, we're always willing to discuss, debate, and, and make decisions on things together, jointly together, that benefit the city as a whole, uh, so, with that being said, motion's been made by Council Rubio, seconded by Council Morin, that we take, uh, we support the ordinance, repealing and replacing the scheduled pay rate for local thirty-nine sixty, and dash eighty-eight, twelve, uh, the order to the city of Tucket, for a senior appraisal technician to the tangible properties and the tangible property specialist, all approved on a well-called vote. Chairman Wilbername? Yes. Council Morin?
Yes.
Council Rubio?
Yes.
Three to zero. No further business for the, for the Finance Committee, I just want to thank you all for your time. Have a nice night. Have a nice night.
Good evening, welcome to the Pawtucket City Council meeting for April 23rd. The first thing on our agenda tonight is public input. We have just one individual signed up in person. Mr. Fred Davis from Manistee Street. Mr. Davis, if you'd like to come forward. Just make sure the green button is actually on that microphone and have at it.
It's, it's fine.
Okay, perfect.
All right, the reason I'm here, I had twofold reason to be here, but Mr. Mercer and I spoke already on the phone. And apparently, one of those is being resolved as we, as we speak. That's about the speeding issue on Beverehill Avenue. The second issue is we seem to be experiencing a rodent problem in the city. It's been going on in my neighborhood for at least the past year. It's gotten, it's gotten to the point where I had to hire an exterminator to come and try and eradicate, eradicate the problem. Because they're trying to make a, make a nesting spot underneath my shed, my backyard. And it's to my experience with, with rodents, they, they try to get a place to live that's right near a food source. And the food source doesn't appear to be in my yard, but neighbors are not particularly proficient, proficient in yard upkeep. So I don't know if, if that issue can be addressed by, by the council? Or that's a zoning board issue? I know, I know it's a zoning board issue to have the, to have the city exterminator come and put bait boxes around, which I've already done also. But those had to be removed because the private exterminator that I hired wants to use a proprietary blend of poison apparently. But the only other, the only other thing is, I, I think the city has to be a little bit more diligent in policing the, you know, the people and who have messy yards, you know, that provide places for, for these rodents to live. And I don't know how much we all can do about it other than to make everyone aware. But basically, that, that's it.
Okay, so that, that's really code enforcement. They go around and make sure that people are keeping their properties up and that they're not.
I don't know if they need to be, you know, informed of violators or.
I will speak to code enforcement and ask them to concentrate on that area. You know, Green Lane and, and Manistee and Gloria, all, all that area around there. Have them pay special attention.
I, I know a couple of years ago, maybe, yeah, probably two years ago now, a neighbor, a couple of streets down, I think on Olympia, the corner of Olympia and Beverehill, I was walking the dog. And she was outside and said, oh, be careful. I had to have an exterminator put rat poison around, around my property. And so it's, I don't know, it's, you know, is expanding from a particular area or not? Or they've been displaced by, by construction or whatever, but.
All of those things could, could be.
Right, everything is a contributing factor, but we certainly have to be diligent. That's, that's, that's about all I have to say.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for.
We'll look into it if we can.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that was it for public input tonight, and we are on the Pawtucket Board of Licensed Commissioners. Pawtucket Board of Licensed Commissioners, come to order, clerk will call the roll.
President Mercer.
Here.
Counselor Ruzio.
Here.
Counselor Codere.
Here.
Counselor Gregor. Counselor Moran.
Here.
Counselor Moreno. Counselor Rubio. Counselor Skoviac.
Here.
Counselor Wildonah. Eight in attendance.
Mr. President, I call for approval of the previous minutes from April 9th, 2025.
Second. The move by Counselor Ruzio, second by Counselor Wildonah, that approval be given to the minutes from the meeting of April 9th, 2025, as prepared by the clerk. Are there any concerns, amendments, deletions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed motion carries.
Item number two, consent agenda, and, and item number three, petition for licenses, I call for approval. The petitions for license starting with the entertainment petition from Movementio Pentecostal Mount Sinai for a license to have a Christian festival on Power Road on July 26th, all the way to the end of the second page, which would be a wholesale junk licenses renewal for New England Gold and Silver on Newport Avenue.
It's been moved by Counselor Ruzio, second by Counselor Moreno, that approval be given to items two and three to consent agenda and petitions for license. The petitions start with an entertainment petition. Midway down page one through the bottom of page two for wholesale junk license renewal. Any discussion on the approval of items two and three? All in favor? Aye. Opposed motion carries.
As advertised for, item number four, as advertised for a public hearing, Victor La House, First Class Open, 24 hours new, L. Warwick, or Warwick LLC, 240 Main Street, license number V I C 25 dash five. My motion is to convene a public hearing.
The move by Counselor Ruzio, second by Counselor Codere, that we convene a public hearing for Victor La House First Class, open until 4:00 AM, new license for L. Warwick, L. Warwick LLC, 240 Main Street, it would be license number Vic dash 25 dash five. I declared a public hearing, open, is the applicant here? I don't see anybody. Is there the applicant online by any chance?
Yeah, one person. If, if you are here to currently speak on this public input, or nice, um, public hearing, can you please press the raise hand button at this time? You're waiting online. And I see no hands raised.
Okay, so they're not the applicant, nor are they here for the public hearing, as far as we know. Okay, all right. And we have nobody, the applicant is not here, is not here. Is there anyone else here that is here for this public hearing on this license at 260 Main Street?
240 Main Street.
I'm sorry, 240 Main Street, thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess I'd ask a quick question to clerk, clerk's office. I assume the applicant was told they needed to be here? Well, we can do one of two things. We could deny it, or we could recess and continue the hearing. Do you have a preference, Counselor Codere?
Um, I would like to continue the hearing to the next meeting.
Okay, in that case, the motion is to, is to recess and continue the hearing till the next meeting and ask the clerk's office to reinforce for the applicant that they need to be here to, to convince the board to grant the license. Any discussion on the motion to recess and continue? In that case, all in favor? Aye. Opposed motion carry. Are we good, Rick? We're good. Okay, item five.
All right, item number five, as advertised for public hearing, automobile repair shop and secondhand shop licenses, class A and B, selling used automobile and parts, transfer 24/7 collision in sales, PSM Sales and Collision Incorporated, 626 Main Street, license number A U T 25 dash four, transfer from 24/7 auto sales and 24/7 collision, Triton Collision Center LLC. My motion is to convene the public hearing.
Move by Counselor Ruzio, second by Counselor Rubio, that a public hearing be convened regarding an automobile repair shop and secondhand shop licenses, class A and B, selling auto, used automobiles and parts. This is a transfer. 24/7 collision sales, PSM Sales and Collision, Inc., 626 Main Street, license number A U T dash 25 dash four. As I said, this is a transfer from 24/7 auto sales and 24/7 collision, which is Triton Collision Center LLC. For the public hearing, open, I do know the applicants for this license are here. Gentlemen, or both or either of you want to come up? You could please give your name and home address to the clerk.
Hi, everyone. My name is Pierre Aviramiya, and I reside at 14 Maury Street, Mendon, Massachusetts.
Can you spell your name for me?
P I E R R O T, and I go by Pierre, P I E R R E. Last name is Aviramiya, A B I R A M I A.
R A M I A?
Yes.
Okay, and your address?
14 Maury, M O W R Y, Street, Mendon, Massachusetts, 01756.
Okay, so it's Pierre Aviramiya?
Yes, sir.
14 Maury Street, Mendon, Massachusetts. Thank you, Mr. Aviramiya. Thank you for coming down. Normally, we would turn this over to the district council person, but he is not here tonight. If I'm correct, you're right near the corner of Sales and Pawtucket Ave. Is that where you are? I mean, Sales and, and Main Street or not?
I'm right across the street from the liquor store on Main Street. There's a, like, what's the name of that store?
Sales, yeah. Okay, so that is right down by the, the sales area, right? And this is a transfer. That's been a, that's been an existing collision automobile sale and used auto pot sales place for quite some time, right?
Yes, sir.
Have you been associated with that business beforehand, or are you just buying it out?
We're buying it out. When I say we, it's myself and my two brothers, we have two other existing businesses in Massachusetts Automotive as well.
Same, same idea, same business model?
Yes.
Those, those things. So you've got, you're accustomed to running that type of business. Are those in a fairly residential area too, or more industrial?
Presidential as well.
Okay, so if the council, the local council were here, if it were my district as a local council, I'd be asking you the same sort of, sort of questions. So there are no stipulations on this license that suggest that it's generally been used pretty well in the area and haven't made complaints. It's not like the, we've had to put stipulations on saying no work at certain hours and things of that nature. When do you, when do you expect to work? What would be your business hours?
We're gonna still continue with the same hours, eight to five.
Eight to five, Monday through Saturday?
Monday to Friday.
Monday.
And Saturday, eight till two.
Okay. I don't honestly have any other questions. I know it's been there for quite some time. It's not my district, as I said, but I don't recall in my 13 years on the council having any complaints from neighbors about the way it's run. So if it were to, if the, if the, the transfer were to be approved, it would be with the trust that you're going to continue to operate in that, in that same manner, that we won't be hearing from, from folks in the neighborhood. I, you'll be, I, I, I can tell just by your demeanor, to be honest with you. Anybody else here have any questions for the applicant? Okay, this is a public hearing, so if you want to just have a seat for a second. Is there anybody else here tonight to speak on this matter? And is there anyone online for this public hearing?
If you are here to speak on this public hearing, can you please press the raise hand button at this time? Waiting online. I currently see no hands.
Okay, in that case, I will clear the public hearing closed, and I will entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the, the transfer of this license.
The move by Counselor Ruzio, second by Counselor Skoviac, that approval be given to the transfer from 24/7 auto sales and 24/7 collision to 24/7 collision in sales, PSM Sales and Collision, Inc. at 626 Main Street. Again, the license would be A U T dash 25 dash four. Any discussion on the motion to approve the transfer? In that case, all in favor? Aye. Opposed motion carries. You're all set, gentlemen. Good luck.
Good luck. Item number six, communication from Lieutenant Joseph Schahan, Pawtucket Police Department Animal Shelter Liaison, to honorable members of Pawtucket City Council, report on Harmony, 65 Patterson Avenue. I want to make a motion to continue this to the next meeting when the district council will be here.
Second. The move by Counselor Ruzio, second by both Counselors Wildonah and Counselor Skoviac, that we continue the communication from Lieutenant Schahan from Pawtucket Police Department regarding a, a report on Harmony at 65 Patterson Avenue. Is there any discussion on continuing this communication till the next meeting? All in favor? Aye. Opposed motion carries.
No further, further business coming before the Pawtucket Board of Licensed Commissioners. I motion that we adjourn and reconvene as Pawtucket City Council.
The move by Counselor Ruzio, second by Counselor Codere, that we adjourn as Pawtucket Board of Licensed Commissioners and convene as Pawtucket City Council. Before we do, I ask that everybody join us in standing for the pledge of allegiance started by Counselor Skoviac. Pawtucket Board of the Pawtucket City Council, come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
President Mercer.
Here.
Counselor Ruzio.
Here.
Counselor Codere.
Here.
Counselor Gregor. Counselor Moran.
Here.
Counselor Moreno.
Here.
Counselor Rubio. Counselor Skoviac.
Here.
Counselor Wildonah. Eight in attendance.
Item number one, I call for approval of the previous minutes from April 9th, 2025 of the Finance Committee, the Committee on Claims and Pending Suits, and the City Council.
Second. The move by Counselor Ruzio, second by Counselor Wildonah, that approval be given to the minutes from the April 9th, 2025 meetings of the Finance Committee, the Committee on Claims and Pending Suits, and the City Council. Any discussion, amendments, deletions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed motion carries.
Item number two, I call for approval of the consent agenda and correspondence.
The move by Counselor Ruzio, second by Counselor Moreno, that approval be given to item two, the consent agenda and correspondence. Are there any items the members would like to discuss separately? Counselor Ruzio.
F.
F. Okay. Anybody else? In that case, all in favor with the exception of item F? Aye. Aye. Opposed motion carries. Item F, counselor.
Item F is communication from Jordan Karlik Blackstone Distribution Center LLC to the honorable members of Pawtucket City Council, One Mashasik Street, Q1, 2025 Construction Update. I would like to put this on the next agenda, because for the district council to be able to speak to this, if he, if he chose, chooses to.
Sure, okay. The move by Counselor Ruzio, second by Counselor Rubio? Yes?
Yes.
That we continue item F, which is a communication from Jordan Karlik Blackstone Distribution Center LLC to the honorable members of Pawtucket City Council regarding One Mashasik Street, Quarter One, 2025 Construction Update. The motion is to continue this, and continue this to the next meeting to afford Counselor Gregor the opportunity to weigh in if he so chooses. Is there any discussion on the motion to continue? All in favor? Aye. Opposed motion carries. Thank you. Item three.
Item number three is a communication from Christopher Montalto Supervisor of Distribution Design Rhode Island Energy to the honorable members of the Pawtucket City Council submitting the installation of conduits to existing poles at Taft Street to be approved pending approval from the Director of Public Works.
The move by Counselor Codere, second by Counselor Moreno, and a communication from Christopher Montalto Supervisor of Distribution Design for Rhode Island Energy to the honorable members of Pawtucket City Council submitting the installation of conduits to existing poles at Taft Street. This is to be approved pending the approval from the Director of the Public Works. The motion is to file a communication. Any discussion on filing? All in favor? Aye. Opposed motion carries.
Or is a resolution proclaiming the week of May fourth through May 10th, 2025, as Rhode Island Small Business Week, appearing to the city of Pawtucket, I think, for approval on a roll call.
The move by Counselor Moreno, second by Counselor Skoviac, that a resolution proclaiming the week of May 4th through May 10th, 2025, as Rhode Island Small Business Week in the city of Pawtucket. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve the resolution? In that case, the clerk will call the roll.
President Mercer.
Yes.
Counselor Ruzio.
Yes.
Counselor Codere.
Yes.
Counselor Moran.
Yes.
Counselor Moreno.
Yes.
Counselor Rubio.
Yes.
Counselor Skoviac.
Yes.
Counselor Wildonah.
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Item number five is a resolution proclaiming May 3rd, 2025 to be Pawtucket Soccer Day in the city of Pawtucket. I move for approval in a roll call vote.
Second. The move by Counselor Codere, second by the entire City Council, that a resolution proclaiming May 3rd, 2025 as a Pawtucket Soccer Day in the city of Pawtucket be approved on a roll call vote. Is there any discussion on the resolution? I'll just briefly say, May, May 3rd is the first home game at the stadium for the Rhode Island Football Club. It's an exciting time for us now. We've also heard, talking with Counselor Wildonah earlier, that, you know, what we've been talking about for quite some time about the ancillary development across the river seems to be nearing a start date, or at least coming closer to fruition. I think this is going to be a big summer for the city. It turns out that the, the team has already won their first game in a, in a, a America's Cup tournament, I think it's called. And they'll be playing a home game against the New England Revolution sometime shortly after May 3rd. So kind of heady times right now, kind of a juxtaposition between what's going on at McCoy Stadium site and what's going on across the river. So I think it's an exciting time, and I will certainly be voting in favor of the resolution. In that case, clerk will call the roll.
President Mercer.
Yes.
Counselor Ruzio.
Yes.
Counselor Codere.
Yes.
Counselor Moran.
Yes.
Counselor Moreno.
Yes.
Counselor Rubio.
Yes.
Counselor Skoviac.
Yes.
Counselor Wildonah.
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Before we adjourn, I'd just like to ask if we might adjourn in the memory of Senate President Dominic Roggerio. He was a stalwart at the, at the State, State House for the last 30 plus years. He started as a state rep, and soon thereafter, won his senate seat that he retained for decades. Eventually worked his way up to become the senate president. He's battled some, he battled serious illness for the last couple of terms and still found a way to lead that body. And I know the senators miss him and will miss his leadership. And the state is poor for his loss, but richer for his, his actions over the last 30 years. So with that, I'd ask that we adjourn in his memory. Counselor?
Yes, and very well stated, Counsel, President Mercer. I also would like to adjourn in memory of Johnny Moran. John was a 1980 graduate of Tolman High School. And after college, he worked for the Providence Journal for 20 years. Then he went on to become an educator and an athletic director in the Seconk school system. He left his mark with many people, and he was always involved. He was really involved with the Pawtucket Pacers Organization, Special Olympian Athletic Group here in town. And him and his wife Lisa, very much involved in that. And he also was, I, I think he was the founder of the Ocean State Cornhole League. And, you know, went to a couple of events that they had sponsored for the Special Olympics for the Pawtucket Pacers Organization. He died way too young, and he, you know, the legacy somebody leaves when you're in a line for two and a half to three hours to go pay your respects. He left a mark on this community, and he will be sorely missed. So I would like to adjourn in his memory as well.
I will second that, Counselor.
I, I'd just like to, you know, put this mic up. I'd like to add to Counselor Ruzio's, John and Lisa both were members of my graduating class at Tolman. And John was a great guy, always had a shit-eating grin on his face, and you loved being in his company. And he did a lot with Special Olympics, and I know Terry and Mike and I have gone down every year to throw out the first softball. And John always tends to be announcer, doing something behind the scenes, so I know he'll be missed greatly. And I just want to turn around and say that again, he was, he was a great guy to be around, and he'll be sadly missed by a lot of people.
I'll echo both of those comments. I've known, I knew John all my life. He's about two or three years older than me, but we both played football with the Crusaders and many other athletic endeavors. He leaves behind his, his mom, Pat, of course, his wife Lisa, his mom Pat, his two sisters, Julie and Marla, and his brother Dave. You, you hit, you hit it on the head. Like, everybody's loved him since he was a child. And that two and a half hour wait you were talking about started at 3:30 for a four o'clock wake and ended at 9:30 for an eight o'clock ending time. That tells you the impact he had on, on folks. There were a lot of, he was the athletic director, as you said, at, at, at Seconk High and a teacher. You know, some of the comments you've seen online, he changed this student's life, he changed this student's life. The baseball team came in uniform to wait two and a half hours to pay their respects. He was just a genuinely nice guy. And that's the best thing somebody can say about you, right? You were a genuinely nice guy, and you made positive impact on the lives of many. So we will adjourn in both John's memory and Senate President Roggerio's memory.